Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 16th meeting of the Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors. We have some very important guests in the room, so thank you for coming. Our neighbors from Upper Providence Township are happy to see you here. If you could please all stand and join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the roll call, and we have a new minutes secretary, Deborah Stanish. Welcome, Deborah. Should we call you Deborah, Deb, Debbie?
Deborah, Deb is fine.
Okay.
And I apologize if I mangle anybody's names until I can get them.
No worries.
There's no way you could do it worse than me, so. All right, so Deborah, would you mind, please, calling the roll call?
Uh, Mr. Draxton.
Here.
Mr. Secumi.
Here.
Mr. Doughty.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Absent.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Here.
And that's all the names that I have on my agenda.
Yes, okay. That's all of us. Okay, first item on our agenda for this evening is the consent agenda. And so with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do we have one?
I'll make a motion for the, to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'd just like to say that I was not present for the April 3rd meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from board members? Questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those who are in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay. Item two this evening, presentations and commendations. And Bud, I think you're gonna handle all this?
No.
You're gonna need some help? Okay.
Need some backup.
All right.
We're here to recognize and we're privileged to recognize the valiant efforts of members of the Black Rock Fire Company of Upper Providence Township and members of the Lower Providence Township Police Department. I'd like to impose upon our guests from Upper Providence Township, Chairwoman Lisa Mossy, Vice Chair John Pearson, and Supervisor Phil Barker, if you would join us up front as we recognize these individuals. Thank you for being with us tonight. You didn't know we were going to put you to work to...
(laughter)
What we're going to do is, we have a number of people that are going to be recognized tonight, so we will call them individually to be presented. Chairwoman Ackman will present the commendation. Chief Alexander of the Lower Providence Fire Company will present their commendation bar. We'll take an individual photograph, and then we'll ask the recipients to step to the side, and then at the end of the presentations, we'll take a group photograph of all of those who've been honored tonight. If you would bear with me, I'd just like to go through a narrative from the commendation of the events from that night which bring us here tonight. On Thursday, February 27, 2014, at 7:43 PM, the Lower Providence Fire Company, the Black Rock Fire Company, the Jefferson Fire Company, and the Lower Providence Township Police Department were dispatched to a structure fire at the Autobahn Corps Apartments. Officer Richard W. Aston arrived on the scene within one minute and reported a working structure fire with individuals trapped in the C building of the complex. Officer Aston, without regard for his personal safety, made entry into the first floor of the building in an attempt to evacuate the entrapped occupants of a third-floor unit, but was driven back by the heavy fire and smoke. Officer Aston then directed the occupants to a third-floor balcony to await rescue and remained in constant contact with the occupants. Lieutenant Stanley M. Turtle, Sergeant James J. Crawford, Corporal Thomas A. Mummy, Officer Robert S. Cable, Officer Sherrell Cutting, and Officer Charles J. Murray subsequently arrived on the scene. Sergeant Crawford, Officer Cable, Officer Cutting, and Officer Murray coordinated their efforts in evacuating the B and C building occupants while Corporal Mummy assisted evacuated occupants at the rear of the C building. Just to go off script a bit here, on the left is a photograph of the rear of the building. You can see the fire extending out of the rear of the building, and to the right is the front of the building, and you can see the outline of the balconies which the firefighters and the police officers encountered. The tower ladder of the Black Rock Fire Company was the first fire unit to arrive on the scene and immediately went into service. Chief William Casper and Captain Daniel Miller with police assistance erected a ground ladder to the third-floor balcony where three children and four adults were trapped. Captain Miller climbed to the balcony and, without regard for his personal safety, remained with the individuals on the balcony, at times allowing them to breathe from his air pack due to heavy smoke conditions. Chief Casper scaled the ladder and affected the rescue of a child. Officer Murray climbed the ladder to the balcony and carried an infant to the ground. Officer Aston climbed to the balcony and assisted two adults to the ground, and Lieutenant Turtle affected the rescue of a small child and assisted two adults to the ground. Sergeant Crawford, Officer Cable, and Officer Cutting assisted by stabilizing the ladder and removing the rescued individuals safely from the area. Meanwhile, the crew of the tower ladder, Deputy Chief James Dewalt, Engineer David Musteller, firefighter Adam Williams, and firefighter Joseph Locasal initiated an interior attack on the fire which had originated in a ground-floor apartment. Their efforts to suppress the fire in the face of intense heat and smoke directly contributed to the effectiveness of the rescue efforts of the entrapped occupants on the balcony. Now, there's two categories of presentations that are being given tonight. The first is a commendation for heroism, which reads that it's presented to the recipient for his or her act of heroism and outstanding courage without regard for his personal safety which resulted in the saving of human lives and is conferred upon him or her before the Board of Supervisors of Lower Providence Township on this 16th day of April 2014. The second category of award this evening is a distinguished unit citation, and that reads that it's presented for their actions which reflect a significant accomplishment which was made as a result of teamwork with decisive and professional actions, strategies, and tactics which resulted in the preservation of human lives and is conferred upon the recipient before the Board of Supervisors of Lower Providence Township this 16th day of April 2014. I'd like to call the first recipient forward at this time, and that is Chief William Casper of the Black Rock Fire Company. (applause) The next recipient is Captain Daniel Miller of the Black Rock Fire Company. Both Chief Casper and Captain Miller have been presented with commendations for heroism. Our next recipient is Lieutenant Stanley M. Turtle of the Lower Providence Township Police Department.[1627.72][1627.72](applause) Lieutenant Turtle is being presented with a commendation for heroism. Our next awardee is Officer Richard W. Aston of the Lower Providence Township Police Department.[1651.11][1651.11](applause) Officer Aston is being presented with a commendation for heroism. Unable to attend tonight but being awarded a commendation for heroism is Officer Charles J. Murray.[1670.11][1670.11](applause) Our next awardee is Deputy Chief James Dewalt of the Black Rock Fire Company.[1682.11][1682.11](applause) Deputy Chief Dewalt is being presented with a distinguished unit citation. I'd like to call forward firefighter Engineer David Musteller of the Black Rock Fire Company.[1709.11][1709.11](applause) Firefighter Musteller is being presented with a distinguished unit citation. Our next award goes to firefighter Adam Williams of the Black Rock Fire Company.[1730.11][1730.11](applause) Firefighter Williams is receiving a distinguished unit citation. Our next awardee is firefighter Joseph Locasal of the Black Rock Fire Company.[1752.11][1752.11](applause) Firefighter Locasal is being presented with a distinguished unit citation. Our next presentation is to Sergeant James J. Crawford of the Lower Providence Township Police Department.[1780.11][1780.11](applause) Sergeant Crawford is being presented with a distinguished unit citation.
So, my client's property goes like this. All the way to the top. Mike, would you please? I'm sorry.
There's a, there's a pointer right there.
Oh, okay. So, her property line goes down here, up, around, and then this shaded spot is included in the property, comes back, and there's an empty kind of spot, which is an inverted U. Her neighbor's property, Ms. Arrington's, is this area. Through numerous years dating back somewhere, we know more than 21 years to current, some have permits, some not, there have been improvements that are encroachments on Ms. Claycomb's property. They range from retaining walls to swing set, trees and brushes, some of the more permanent structures are pools, a pool in addition to a house, a wooden deck, and a concrete deck. Now, with this, it's created certain legal issues, and in an effort to avoid litigation and quiet title, parties have come up with this plan to essentially do a lot line adjustment. So, as Mike correctly stated, it's about 20 feet by 128 feet, which will be absorbed into Ms. Arrington's property. And with that, that's the minor subdivision in which we're seeking approval for. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have or...
I don't have any questions. I think it seems pretty straightforward.
It's the easiest solution we could come up with with the current problem we're facing.
Excellent. Okay. Great. Thank you, Bob. Well, at this time, we could entertain a motion to approve the minor subdivision.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. So, we have a motion. Do you want me to read that?
That's Resolution Number 14-30, which would approve the lot line change.
I need that one.
Sure. You can tell the board what they're approving.
What's in front of the board is Resolution Number 14-30, which, as counsel for the property owner just stated, is simply transferring 2,640 square feet from one parcel to another parcel. It's a lot line change. There's no new building lots, there's no public improvements, and hopefully, it avoids litigation. So, there's two waivers included in the resolution. And the resolution incorporates the Woodrow Associates review letter of January 29th, 2014, and also, the resolution would approve the two waiver requests, which are set forth in a letter from applicant's engineer dated February 19th, 2014. So, that's the formal, what's before the board on the motion.
Thank you, John. Okay, so, we have a motion. Jill, are you okay with that motion being to accept Resolution 14-30?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second now. Do we have any questions on that, the resolution that's before us? No questions from the board? Do we have any questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Motion carried.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming. Okay, item 3B, new business. Discussion and consideration of the application for funding to the United States Department of Justice 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. Chief Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We're respectfully requesting that the board approve our application to the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Program. We've participated in this program for approximately the last 14 years, and what this program provides for is 50% funding in a reimbursement form for any body armor that's purchased for our police officers. The application period opened April 1st, and we would anticipate hearing whether we've received an award sometime early fall of this year. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Bud. We're always happy when we're asking for money. Okay, could I entertain a motion for the township to enter into the Department of Justice 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program?
I would make that motion.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 3C, discussion and consideration of a request from Lower Providence Community Center Ambulance for a waiver of permit fees for three temporary signs. Mike, you... Janet, you're gonna come up. Excellent. Okay, we have our representative from the Lower Providence Community Center Ambulance. Welcome, Janet.
Hello, thank you. Excuse me, my name is Janet Azzara. I live at 625 Mockingbird Lane in Audubon, and that's A-Z-Z-A-R-A.
Thank you.
Our signs are to announce our building fund, Phase 2, with our new goal of $400,000 by the end of this year, which would be 12/31. The original building campaign in 2012 fell slightly short of our goal, and now, we are now facing additional costs due to the unstable soil conditions on the new building site and possible additional expenses to add sprinklers and a new generator to the building. And especially the sprinklers, if you remember reading a couple of weeks ago, that Norberth had an ambulance go get on fire, and that was in their building, I believe, as they say, their ambulances are kept in the same building where their crew stays and sleeps and so forth. We are now going to have that same situation. Where we are at this point on, in Hillside, there is a driveway, there is a separation between the two buildings, so it really wasn't, didn't seem necessary. But it's definitely, if that's my goal, is to have, you know, sprinklers in that building. The three signs are double-sided, three feet by four feet, or four feet by four feet, constructed and framed with wood. Two metal posts screwed to each side will hold them securely to the ground. The lettering will reference our website, which is www.medic322.com, where donations can be made through PayPal. And I just discovered that. That's really cool, and it's very, if I can do it, anybody can do it. And a receipt is then printed. Each sign will also give Eileen Kuntz, my vice president's, name and phone number for donations by cash or check and an address. She would also handle special requests for tax receipts, as we are a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. Of course, we will also let her the proud name of our organization, the Lower Providence Community Center and Ambulance, which has been serving our community for over 60 years. We currently have two sign locations assured with permission, one on Paulings Road near Egypt Road, and one near the corner of Level Road on Ridge Pike. We are seeking a third location somewhere near Valley Forge Road and Germantown Pike, as we do service a lot of calls from the Worcester area. We'd like the signs to remain in place until our goal is met or until the end of the year. Thank you, we do thank you, the supervisors, who have been very supportive of everything we've been doing, for considering our request and also for waiving any associated fees tonight. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them.
Thank you, Janet. Well, I, first I'll call for a motion to approve the waiver request, and then, if anybody has any questions, then...
Okay.
You have a motion to approve the waiver request?
Okay, thank you, Jason. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any questions from board members? Any questions from our audience? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next one, very similar. Item 3D, discussion and consideration on a request from the Education Foundation for the Methacton Community for a waiver of permit fee for 10 temporary signs. And this is for an event that they actually already held. Mike, do you have info on that, or should I just read this memo?
I, sorry, I have no more.
Okay, okay. They give me a cheat sheet, and your name's here, so I'm gonna call on you. All right. So, our memo here is request for temporary sign permit waiver request. Ms. Janice Herman of the Education Foundation for Methacton Community is requesting waiver of fees for 10 temporary signs for a fundraising campaign. The normal fee would have been $75, and they're asking for us to waive that. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to waive that permit fee.
I'll make that motion to waive that permit fee.
Thank you, Jill. You have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any questions from the board?
I would just note that I would have to abstain from the vote, as I'm a member of the foundation, and helped plan the organization, helped plan the event.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions from the audience? Yes, Joyce? The event was, well, Patrick should probably talk about it, but it was Forks?
Art?
Art. Thank you.
The foundation every year holds a fundraiser. It's called Arts, Quarks, and Forks. This year was the second time that they held the fundraiser. It was on Monday, April 7th, at Chadwick's, from 6:00 to 9:00. The idea of the fundraiser is they have a lot of community organizations donate food, beverage, that kind of thing, and they display artwork from the students at the high school, as well as students that previously graduated from the art department, and are professional artists. They had some live music there, and it's an opportunity for residents to come in and bid on and buy the artwork of the various students and raise money that goes back to the foundation to be contributed back to the school district for items that are not covered by the traditional school budget. It was a very successful event this past year. I think they sold close to 275 tickets, and it was very well-attended throughout the community.
Thank you, Patrick.
Could you, is the name of the fundraising, or the name of the event again? I didn't cut it. It was Food, Forks, and...
Sure. It's called Arts, Art, Quarks, and Forks.
Art, Quarks, and Forks. Okay, thank you.
Say that three times fast. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve that waiver. Call for the vote, then. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? One? Abstention?
Abstention.
Okay. Motion carried. Okay, item 3E. Rich is gonna give us our 2014 quarterly budget review.
Okay, this is, actually, this is refreshing, because the last time I was up here this early, I think I'd been here two months, and we had an emergency budget meeting. This is gonna be quite different. Just to set the stage a little bit, this, these are our budget figures, our basic budget figures. We projected, beginning the year, with a beginning fund balance of $1.7 million. We projected conservatively that we would bring in 8.7 million in terms of revenues, and we projected that we would expend $9,659,000. That would leave us with a fund balance of $804,000 at the end of the year. That, although stronger than in previous years in terms of our projection, still brings us with a deficit of $911,000. So, that's the figure that we need to work on as we're going forward into 2014. So, I've been watching the budget for the first quarter of the year, and obviously, the target figure would be, in terms of expenditures, around 25%. We'd like to spend less than that during the first quarter. When we look at our expenditure report as of the end of March, we project out that we've spent 19.2%. That's a good figure, but I look at it a little differently than what most people look at it. And what I tend to do is I adjust for our ending balance of $804,732 that we just showed on the previous slide, and I prorate that over the entire year. And when I do that, we're really at a 21% expenditure level, because we wanna finish with at least that $804,000 in the general fund. We actually wanna do better than that. Terms of the revenues, the target again is 25% at this time of the year. Unadjusted revenue looks great. Looks like 37% so far, but that can fool you, because it includes the beginning balance of $2,053,000. So, what do I do with that? I adjust that figure as well. I prorate that throughout the year, and when I do my adjusted revenues, we're about 23%, which is good. It's not great, but we're beating the expenditures. The expenditures are at 21%. Now, here's a couple of different ways that you can look at the expenditures and revenues to date. And Mr. Starecek, when she, when he used to be on the finance committee, he and I used to lock horns periodically, but always come out winners over which way you looked at it. If you look at it strictly on the basis of the total revenues received to date, including the beginning fund balance, you've got revenues of $3.9 million against expenditures of $2,000,000. So, right now, you would say, we're doing really well. It's $1.9 million surplus as of the end of March, but don't forget, we began the year with $2 million, okay? When I put, when I adjust the figures, prorate it for the beginning fund balance that we began with, and prorate it for the ending fund balance as well, you really get, in terms of revenues, $2,379,000. You get, in terms of expenditures, $2,212,000. So, we're really running an adjusted surplus of $167,000 as of this quarter. Now, there's another way to look at it, and some people look at it this way. I don't look at it this way. I look at it for comparison purposes. But if you take all the revenue, you deduct out our beginning balance of $2 million, you get revenue of $1.8 million. Our expenditures remain the same, because we're not, without any adjustment, we're not including any of the ending fund balance. So, that'd be $2 million. Under that scenario, you'd be running a deficit of $145,000. But as I said before, I believe in the adjusted basis that I utilize, and right now, I think that you're running slightly to the positive. Now, in terms of expenditure highlights, snow, everybody wanted to talk about snow. We spent 115% of our budget. We had budgeted $128,000, or no, we had budgeted $111,000, we spent 128. That leaves us $17,364 over budget. The other area that was related to snow is the EOC budget, and in that case, we're $12,626... over. That's due to, we had originally contracted with Blackboard, then we decided to, at the police department's recommendation, to go over to the county service, which was supposed to only be $3,000 a year. We really found the county service inadequate, and we went back to the Blackboard. Another expenditure highlight that's coming up, and soon you'll be dealing with it, is the resurfacing budget. We put $250,000 in the resurfacing budget for the year, and it's, that was to resurface Riddenhouse Road and part of Arcola that we didn't resurface two years ago. We held off on that lower part of Arcola because of the middle interceptor project, and we looked at it this year, we put it in the budget, we put $250,000 along with Riddenhouse in the budget. In addition to that, this year, because of the constant freezing and thawing that we got, Church Street and Crawford Street are really in bad shape. We're recommending that we do both of those roads. We estimate that'll be $250,000 to $300,000 more. Tim Woodward, Township Engineer, and I and John Premus are gonna be working on those figures. We're gonna be meeting next week to finalize those figures, we'll bring those figures back to you when we have them. Tim's already authorized to prepare the bid for the roads, but we'll make sure that you know what those figures are before we go ahead with the bid. Revenue highlights for the year, we started the year off really well, really well. We budgeted $1.7 million to start the year off, we began the year with $2,530,000. That's a surplus of $337,000. Real estate transfers, I did an adjustment on the real estate transfers, the adjusted figure, which doesn't appear in the reports that you've got, and the reason it doesn't is because we're, under an accrual accounting, we're always accruing the real estate transfers to the month in which they were earned, so we're always pulling them back a month, but the adjusted figure is $54,499. That stands at a 15 percent of budget so far, that is a laggard, okay? That's 10 percent behind where it should be. But, real estate transfers are extremely difficult, extremely difficult to predict, they're up, they're down, at one point or another, when I was at Upper Mayfield, I did a 25-year analysis of all of our revenue accounts. We tried to trend real estate transfers as to whether or not there was a particular trend associated with the revenue receipts, there really isn't. And so we'll see that fluctuate all year, we'll get a better handle on that in June, and we'll have an even better handle on it in September. But it deserves watching throughout the year. On the positive side, earned income taxes, we've collected 1.2 million so far, well that's 29 percent. So we're 4 percent ahead of where we had projected. Now, some of that's due to end-of-the-year bonuses that fall into this year that people receive, so that's not, that's not as positive as what you would think, but it's pretty positive, particularly if that trend continues. These are all the roads that we discussed during the budget. Just to remind you, these are the Riddenhouse roads that we put in the budget for resurfacing this year. Those roads that appear in the dark green are the roads that we got, that we took care of last year, Level Roads on there, Sunny Side Avenue's on there, Appledale's on there. We had budgeted for Arcola as well, and as you can see, the bulk of Arcola, we did in my very first year as Township Manager. Well that ends my report, does anybody have any questions?
Well, all things considered, a positive report, and thank you for putting it together. John, I know you just came on board, but roads continue to be a big issue for me, I know, for all of us, and I know that Crawford and Church certainly need to be redone, anyone who's ridden on them recently can certainly attest to that, but sometime back, we commissioned a road study, and I'd also like to look ahead, excuse me, to a comprehensive approach to roads, and you've heard me Rich, talk about it before, but I think we need a real big picture on what needs to be done, what kind of funding that entails, and how we're gonna move forward from here.
Yeah, I agree, we're trying to get, I realize we've got, you know, John's only been here a week and a half, Tim Woodrow is fairly new Township Engineer, you know, I've given them copies of what the previous Township Engineer had gotten about three-quarters of the way through, and trying to do that long road plan. We're trying to project out right now, roads, I've given them a series of collector roads that I think are important for us to take care of for 2015. We may be able to bring those to you at the same time that we bring the whole bid to you. Hopefully we will.
Thank you Rich, thanks for all your efforts in putting that together, I know you and the finance committee diligently work on those numbers on a regular basis, we do appreciate it, and you're also working on a five-year plan.
Yes.
That will be a big endeavor, we appreciate that. And I just have to point out, Jason brought up the roads, in our monthly report from the Public Works, Joe Chalano cites that they have filled 600 potholes during the month of March, so, there's probably almost that many more, unfortunately, but we do appreciate their efforts. And in the meantime, they're out chipping our branches, and that's going well. Right John?
Yes, it is going well. Luckily, we reached out to surrounding townships to loan of additional chipper, so basically we have two chipping crews out every day. Unfortunately, some of the residents, I think, are doing their spring cleanup and pruning, and some of the houses have an awful lot of material, so we're behind a couple weeks. At the end of the month, I can evaluate the chipping program, and hopefully we're almost done at that point, and if we're not, I'll give you a list of streets that are still need to be chipped. But hopefully, we're gonna make, we're making good progress.
Thank you John.
Excellent, thank you. We appreciate that effort, it's, it's definitely gonna be, you know, an impact to cleaning up the township, making it look like it's not a disaster area from these bad storms. And then you'll be on to using the street sweeper, once you're all, once you have all the branches on, then you're gonna clean the roads.
Right. Because we have both crews out all day, it's hard to get the sweeper out right now. The sweeper is converted over to sweep, but we just have the manpower at this moment, but as soon as we free up a person to take that out, that'll be on the road. We are getting some calls about it, but as soon as I'm able to, I'll have the sweeper out sweeping the roads.
Excellent, thank you. And that rain that we had yesterday washed a lot of those, that grit and cinders away, but then we have washout issues.
Right.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to item four, our announcements for upcoming meetings. The Planning Commission will have their monthly meeting April 23rd at 7:00 PM, and are there any items on the Planning Commission's agenda that we can announce, that we know of?
At this time, there is one hearing, it's, well actually, one consideration, and that's the zoning amendment for, that was brought back for the development on Ridge Pike here. So that zoning text will be coming for, to be considered by the Planning Commission.
And the zoning hearing board will have their meeting on April 24th at 7:00 PM, and I think there's only one item on their agenda as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Library Board will have their meeting on April 28th at 7:00 PM, and the Police Department is having their annual DEA National Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, April 26th, and that is in conjunction with students from Arcola Intermediate, that's a new one, excellent. And that will take place from 9:00 to 1:00 PM here at the Township Building, around back, right? Or is it up here? Around back, thank you bud. Okay, comments and other business, board members, you have anything?
I have one thing, a report from the Sewer Authority meeting held last Wednesday, something I mentioned our last meeting. A few years ago, the Sewer Authority began an extensive program of inspection, testing and repair in order to reduce the flow into our system during heavy periods of rain. The Sewer Authority Board wanted the public to know that they are still inspecting private property for sources of I and I, that's inflow and infiltration, in general, that's water that's not supposed to be in the sewers, that's getting into the sewers, and that this will be ongoing for the next couple of years. Property owners who will be inspected will be notified by mail, or will be posted on their sewer bill. The cooperation of the public is really what makes this program a success, and the Board of the Sewer Authority would like to thank everyone for their help with this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you Jason. Any other board members?
I wanna ask, I'm gonna listen.
You have anything?
Can I, if you would allow me to, I'd like to ask Brian to come to the podium.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so we can get an update on the ambulance project?
We'd be happy to hear an update. I thought you were just here to spend the evening with us.
Brian Klinsky, Executive Director for Lower Providence Community Center. I was hoping to report, or you guys see some equipment this week? You know what? I apologize. There we go, better?
No?
Did they turn it off?
She was green.
Nothing?
Help him out there Bill.
Better?
Sorry. Basically, I did talk to, we basically made the decision to use JP Mascaro to help remediate the material that is in the ground, the unsuitable soil that we came upon back in the fall. So we are, have an agreement with them, they're looking about a week project to dig it out. They were hoping to start last week. I guess they're finishing up on the Mathacton baseball field project right now, so actually talking to my contact there this afternoon, they're looking to mobilize everything on Monday, you know, right after the holiday, and start that project. We're also using earth engineering out of East Norton to do a, just kind of a third-party analysis of the remediation project, 'cause they'll be digging it out, we're gonna make sure we get everything that's in the ground, and then at the same time, test the material as we're, as we're backfilling all the material, making sure it's compacted to the correct ratio prior to restarting the whole land development project. So, we're anxiously waiting, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we will start seeing dirt being pushed around and actually formulating the building pad so that we can start the building project. I know the Kissler Building is also very anxious, 'cause you figure by now, we should've been picking out paint colors and finalizing carpet samples, so, a little behind, but hopefully we will be getting started here in the next week or two.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you Brian. No problem. Excellent.
Okay, do we have any comments from the audience? Hearing none, we'll commence our meeting here for this evening. I'd like to again recognize our friends from Upper Providence, thank you for attending and for staying for the duration.
For that, we have a new award.
Perseverance.
Perseverance Award, yes, that's a good one. Okay, so could we have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you.
I have a couple signature copies.